Mary Ann, is it here?
Well, I don't have an agenda for this.
We don't. When we open.
All right, so this is a study session, so I don't have an agenda or anything for it. So, I think it's, this is primarily of staff.
Yeah, yeah. Oh.
We do have an agenda for it. Is this?
Roll call.
Oh, okay. Pretty brief. All right, I call to order the Planning Commission subdivision committee special meeting, February 27th. Can I have a roll call?
Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sol Focanick. Commissioner Andry.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty, absent. Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
And that takes us to the purpose of this meeting, which is the discussion, study session for the zoning code update.
Could I just have a quick?
Yeah, I think.
A quick comment. I know it's a study session, if it's agreeable, that we could open it for a public comment. Got an individual here I ran into at the Genal Lumber, and had a question, we're just talking about some uses in the residential neighborhoods, he had a question or a comment, and I said it'd be better, just maybe to come into this meeting, just lay it out a little bit, we can't discuss it, but at least throw it out here, and then from there, we can go, you know, rather than come to a regular meeting, and don't mind, just.
Okay, so I guess that's a question for staff, or for the city attorney, is there any issue with?
There's no issue, you can certainly take a public comment in advance of the presentation, if you'd like.
Okay, great. So, if you would like to step forward, state your name, and share with us your comments.
Hi, my name's Rob Stevens, live on Bunker Hill, in Courier Row. What I would like to do is add an additional approach, probably, moved in in '71, probably in the mid-'80s, I put a pad on the one side, to match the driveway with the brick ribbons. And I'd like to get the car off the street and up there. I just worry about it being on the street, when I'm working on the cars in the garage, I kind of just move them out, and it's nice to be able to get it off the street and park it in the other pad. It'd just be more convenient to get it up and down, and actually to code if it had an approach and a curb cut. There's several in the area, in fact, there's one right across the street. I took some pictures, I have a picture of the front of the house. Right now, when we moved in, the fire hydrants were on the other side of the street, and then when they redid the main, the water main, they put it on our side, just on the neighbor's side. So now that area's a red curb, anyway, in front of that, where I'd like to put the approach. So I wouldn't be taking up any extra, like, street parking. I guess in our area, there's been a problem with other people parking in front of other people's houses, we don't have that on our street, but in watching that next door, there's, I guess there's been a problem, but that's all I've been after, is to get another approach to the existing. Courier Row's unique, they're wider lots, they're bigger lots, so there's plenty of room, and I thought that would fall under what you guys are discussing.
All right? I've got pictures, do you want to see them, or?
No.
No? You don't need them?
Not really, I don't think at this point, but I had mentioned, I said, "We can't really discuss it, but maybe we can have staff, maybe put just a discussion in general on one of our future agendas." In the meantime, they can get with the staff, and who knows, maybe get something going that way, so you can.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Sure. All right, so that brings it back to staff and our consultant.
Of course, Chairman, Commission members, we are scheduled here to have another study session, talk about our zoning code update, and we have a brief amount of time available, so I want to make sure we get right into it, but I wanted to mention to you very quickly that this is really our last scheduled study session with the consultant team, we'll see how it transpires tonight, and how we progress, we could add another one if need be, but we can discuss that maybe towards the end of this time we have until 6:00, but we're hopeful that we can get some constructive feedback from you this evening, and that the consultant team can take that, and we're prepared to bring something back to you in March, if everything goes well, for a more formal consideration. And with that, we have Laura Satson and Jose, because I'm missing.
I'm Laura, that's Jose.
Yes, yes, sorry. But Laura and Jose have been working very, very hard on this, and so with that, I'll pass it off to Laura to take you through this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we're finding this very helpful to sit with you, and we hope you do as well, in a much less formal setting. And we've got the meat, essentially, of the code tonight to talk about, it's the zones, the uses that are allowed in each zones, and development regulations for each zone. You were provided, I think last Thursday or Friday, both, a draft of what is called Article Two for the zones, as well as the accompanying definitions section, because it helps when you're looking at the table of uses to understand what the uses are as described, so I hope you've had a chance to look through that, if not, we're here to answer any particular questions you have this evening. As I mentioned, Article Two is really what most people look at when they're going to look at the zoning code, because they want to know what they can do in the zone, or conversely, if they have a use, what zone that use is permitted in, and then also, what are the development standards that apply to that, what are the heights, setbacks, lot coverage, all those things that really indicate how a lot can be built, including, as the gentleman raised this evening, in the R1 zone, perhaps what the front yard coverage could be, or in the case, it sounds like he probably also wants to put an additional driveway in, a curb cut, and lest that may be regulated by other things, it might be in the traffic code, not just in the zoning code, so I'm not prepared to respond completely to this evening, but I just, I did want to bring that up. And as we go through the study session this evening, Jose will be chiming in with answers to questions, so this is fairly informal, so if you'd like us to stop at any point in time, please do, but I'll get through the brief presentation, and then we'll hop into what I'll call the use table, and also the development standards table. But big picture items, what has happened, and what's proposed as part of the zoning code update, is to eliminate the light, or the limited industrial zone, we've had conversations in the past, that it's very similar to your business park zone, and really, the only distinguishing characteristic largely was whether or not commercial recreational uses would be permitted in one zone or the other. We had conversations with the ad hoc committee about this, we had a study session with the Planning Commission about it, and the direction was that since those commercial recreational uses are regulated by a conditional use permit, anyway, the city has the discretion to look at those on a case-by-case basis, and determine whether or not a proposed location is appropriate. So, in light of that, there is going to be only one industrial zone proposed as part of the code update. There will be a new zone as well, the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, this is proposed to implement a category that was adopted in the general plan a number of years ago, to allow for more of a urban center, if you will, not tall-rise buildings, but something that allows for a mix of uses, and creates a very, much more pedestrian environment along parts of Los Alamos and Cattella, really, the core, the commercial core of the city. So, the key changes with regard to uses that are proposed for the code update is to really reflect more modern uses of land, the prior code had long lists of things that could be regulated, and rather than try to list a bunch of uses, and I think we're all aware that how people use property changes over time, and how uses evolve, it's easier to create more generic categories of uses, as long as they're well-described, so the two key types of uses in the commercial designations are commercial limited and commercial general, and so there are, because these are commercial zones, a lot of uses are proposed to be permitted by right, those that are, probably require a little bit more discretion, things like tattoo parlors or massage parlors would be subject to a conditional use permit, so you've got two types of commercial uses regulated a little bit differently. Also, there has been an expansion of the types of uses that would require an administrative use permit, instead of a conditional use permit, so that would be staff-level, rather than Planning Commission-level thing, excuse me, just a moment. That's something that would be a little less expensive, and much more timely for an applicant to get, there would be uses that really wouldn't require the full public hearing and discretion of the Planning Commission, so anywhere you see an AUP in the use table, those were things that would be at a staff level. In the code, it does say that the director has at any time the ability to kick something up to the Planning Commission, even if it's in his or her purview, if he or she feels that it's important that it be before the Planning Commission, rather than a director level, it can be pushed up to the Planning Commission at the director's discretion, that's something that is in the code today, and it's certainly carried forward, and is important to consider. The property development standards have also been tweaked, we wanted to be careful not to change development standards to any large degree, because you have things that have been built to code with specific setbacks and building heights, and it's important not to create non-conforming uses, or non-conforming conditions by changing development standards, so there really hasn't been too much change in the property development standards. What we've done is, we've tweaked things that were just completely unclear, particularly in the R2 zone, there was an adjusted height requirement in both the R2 and R3, I think, as well, let me look that up real fast, because I think this is an important change, and this would be on page.
Two dash nine.
Thank you, Jose, two dash nine, in the table, where it indicates that there is a maximum height of 35 feet, and three stories, both in the, primarily in the R2 zone, and so if anything is in excess of 25 feet, adjacent to a single-family residential zone, it requires additional setback, so you can go to 35 feet, but only if the building's pushed back another five feet or so, from the property line, just to create a little bit more buffer, if you will, between multifamily and single-family zones, and that's different than today, a building can go up to 35 feet without any additional setback.
Is the R1 zone 30 feet, though?
The R1 zone is still 30 feet.
I wonder why, why would it be different, why would it be 25 for R2? I mean, if R1, next to an R1 at 30 feet, why would an R2 not be able to be 30 feet next to an R1?
That's a good question, and maybe the question is, is the 30 feet in R1 working for everybody pretty well, too? And it's not number of stories, it's 30 feet, and if somebody could squeeze in three stories and 30 feet, they would be able to do that today, within the R1 zone, so that's probably a good discussion point as well. The outdoor open space requirements in the multifamily zones has also been adjusted to make sure that there, at least in the R2 zone, that there is both private and common open space, and those standards are on page 2-10 of the draft language. And there's been a minimum standard, just to make sure that people aren't trying to squeeze in unusable open space for your multifamily housing, that it has to measure at least 20 by 20, so it's not an afterthought, it's something that's actually integrated and thought into any development proposal, to have some open space that's going to function as a playlot, or a community gathering area for the residents of that development. In the commercial standards, there have been not too many changes, except in the PM zone. Currently, in your PM zone, there's a strange requirement for a 50-foot setback, if you face an arterial street that's across the street from a residential zone, so you've got residential zone, a wide street, and then another requirement for a 50-foot setback, and talking to staff about it, we actually had a working session with staff a couple of weeks ago, and went through all kinds of permutations, and thought, "That seems like an awfully big setback," and we even looked through aerial photos as where it's been applied, and what you have is a lot of unused space in the industrial zones that might be put to better use, certainly, you know, it's nice to have a big 50-foot setback, but as property's development over time, there's probably not a need for that much setback when it's fronting an arterial street, so there is a proposal that that, and this is on page.
Two dash 21.
Two dash 21.
Do we have places, do we have properties, residential, on arterials, across the street?
Yes, we do, there's.
Cerritos, I guess, okay. Yeah, around that area.
You've got that environment, and when we looked at, we actually looked at ceritos in particular, and it just seems excessive when you've got anywhere from 80 to 100 feet of separation already in place, because of the street, plus a setback of the residence, which is usually 25 to 30 feet, now you're adding 50 more feet to that industrial building, so you're ending up with 175-plus feet of separation, which we were questioning, why is that necessary, when the street itself is providing not only separation, but it also is, you know, if there's noise, or whatever, the street's probably going to be more of a contributor than.
What's the current setback without a?
Current setback's 50.
I mean, without, if it weren't across from residential?
Fifteen. Fifteen.
Fifteen, all right, okay.
And so the proposal is that if it's abutting a residential zone, that it would be 40 feet, and that's immediately adjacent, so there's no requirement with regard to what type of street it's on, there's a 10-foot setback if it's adjacent to a commercial or another industrial property, but if it's abutting a residential, it's a 40-foot setback.
All right, okay.
So we've taken the street out of the mix, but still had some fairly, you know, a pretty good setback for you, where you have industrial and residential interface. Also, for the commercial zones, and for the one industrial zone, the city currently has a lot coverage requirement, the general plan imposes also a floor-area ratio requirement, and we felt that that was overkill, to have both lot coverage and an FAR, so the proposal is to eliminate the partial coverage, the lot coverage, and just have the floor-area ratio and setbacks and requirements for parking areas really dictate how the site's developed. And the floor-area ratios are fairly generous, it's a 1.5 for your commercial office zone, one for the commercial general, and for the PM industrial zone, it's a 1.5 FAR, and my guess is for the industrial, just because of the, I can't imagine that that would be achieved in an industrial zone, that's a pretty generous floor-area ratio. And with that, I, Mr. Chairman, wanted to leave it pretty much open for discussion, if particular commissioners had questions, like the very good question that Commissioner Lowe just raised, otherwise, we can just start to look through the use tables, and see if anybody has any questions, starting with residential, and then move on to residential development standards, and then do the same for the other zones. I don't think there'll be as many questions on the overlay zones, but you might have questions about the Town Center Mixed Use Zone as well, and just a quick note on the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, as I mentioned in the introductory statements, the goal, per the general plan, is really to allow for a pedestrian-type environment, and to create some more activity along the frontages, and so there are restrictions on office uses proposed in the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, that you can't put all office uses along the ground floor, largely because those close up at 5:00 at night, might not be open on weekends, and that's not the type of environment that you want, you want something that's a little more, not 24/7, I don't think anybody wants a 24/7 environment, but certainly something that's a little more active into the evening and on weekends.
Okay. I had a couple of questions to start, so along the lines of what Commissioner Lowe mentioned, with the heights in the different zones, I see in the R3 zone, it says three stories slash 35 feet. Why do we care how many stories it is?
This is a carryover from the current code, and probably you don't, other than the fact that, you know, maybe you're just looking at the massing of the building, and when you add additional stories, it just looks more massive sometimes, because it's, you've got additional stories, but a lot of cities are foregoing stories and just indicating height, just like we've got for the R1 and R2 zones, so there's no magic reason other than it's a carryover. With 35 feet, developer might be hard-pressed to get four stories in, but again, that would be the Commission's prerogative, to eliminate the number of stories.
Okay, I think that's just kind of a discussion item, because I think, it depends on what we're trying to accomplish. So I just, I.
Good for elimination.
You what?
I'm good for elimination.
Elimination of.
Of the stories, just having it be a height limitation.
And keeping it at 35, but keeping it at 35 feet?
Correct.
Now, is that then allow an extra, so many feet for equipment and stuff like that? Is that included, the 35 is included in that?
Usually elevator shafts are not included, or any rooftop pertinences.
So in theory, they could go to 40 feet, then?
If they've got rooftop-mounted equipment, they could.
And is this the height above grade?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The only thing that I would be concerned about is, where we're going to see this is going to be in the apartment areas, okay, and if you go, look at the two that are currently under construction right now, on Farquhar, the two that we approved, next to each other, I mean, I'm even, I'm not liking even the third story, we would have a wall of buildings going, you know, eventually, I mean, it's to, if you can just expand that look, you know, it's, I mean, of course, this will be years ahead, I mean, but as properties are repurposed, but you're literally going to have a wall along there, and I, so I, you know, 30 feet, right now, we're at 30 plus, plus the five, you know, for the rooftop setback, I think that's adequate, if we're going to, you know, I would almost like to see two stories, frankly, in these multifamily areas, if, just simply to preserve the look, I mean, that's.
I think that might be difficult, from a standpoint of new housing legislation that's come forward, that says, if your general plan says you can build up to 30 units per acre, and your zoning code doesn't have standards that allow a developer to do that, that, you could be challenged on that.
Is the only way to accomplish it?
Is to go up to three stories.
So you leave it, you eliminate the stories and just leave the?
Or.
Or you're limited to no more than three, then?
Or even if you had a height, for example, if you had the height at 25 feet, and allowed 30 units per acre, I think somebody could make a pretty good argument that you can't get 30 units per acre within that limit.
Right.
And you'd have an inconsistency between what the general plan allows, and what the zoning, and a developer is able to default to the general plan.
But that's a maximum, right, the 30 per acre's a maximum, not a, not a?
I, I'm looking at the city attorney, but I think you'd probably still be challengeable if you have development standards that don't allow somebody to achieve what the general plan says they could achieve. Particularly if you've got a, there's a 30 DU per acre limit in the R3 zone as well.
If the, one of the concerns is having to do with aesthetics, again, it was briefly mentioned, but there is a note here, that's currently not our code, and that is, if the structures go higher than 25 feet in height, that an additional five-foot setback, sideyard setbacks required.
Right.
So, as that structure's going vertical.
They need to step it back.
Step it back, so, which is what we're not seeing right now.
Right, right.
So I think that's going to provide some relief from that canyon effect that can occur between structures, as well as the disparity that can occur, but somebody may be perfectly happy with that single-family home, and not want three stories at, right at that five-foot setback, right up against them, the five feet is what we came up with, if the Commission feels, maybe it should step back a little bit further, we're certainly open to hearing that.
Well, that's stepping back on the front and the side, you're just bringing.
This is a sideyard setback provision only, so.
Not a front setback.
Right, because the sideyard is so narrow, and the thought is, if you have two structures right next to each other, that are both going 30 feet in height, at least you're, in that design, you're going to have to push that portion of the building above 25 feet back. Again, the five feet is just a subjective number we threw out, I've seen a little bit further of a setback, because then that third floor that gets established, or possibly, you know, maybe it's a portion of a townhouse.
Right.
Then you get some usable space, that might end up being a little outdoor, you know, balcony-type setting for someone, but the whole idea there is to, again, try and minimize the potential of that canyon effect that occurs with two tall buildings right next to each other.
If we're going to keep, if we're going to eliminate, then I like that idea, that we at least have them go in, as they get above, all right, the 25 feet with the five, if that's, it's already in there?
Yes.
All right, okay, all right, okay, all right, well, that's fine.
On the R3, it's that we need to put in the number one in there, I don't know if you've noticed that, Laura.
Yeah, we need to put the footnote.
Okay.
And then eliminate the three stories? I'm just looking for like, you know.
Yeah, no, I like, if we're going to go with the height, I mean, I don't want to get afoul of the, you know, the inconsistency, so yeah, so just make it the height, if they can, just they have a way of squeezing them in, you know, it's just.
I'll try.
I'd like to return to Commissioner Co's question about why 25 feet in the R2 and 30 in the R1, I think in the R1, you'd have a case where you might have buildings already in a neighborhood that are two stories, 30 feet high, and so if somebody's coming in with a similar building, it's consistent with the neighborhood. I think in the case of the interface for a multifamily building, it's usually going to be bulkier than a single-family home, just because it's bigger, and so that's why the additional setback kicks in at 25 feet, rather than 30, just because of the character of the neighborhood of a single-family versus that interface issue.
But you're not going three stories in the R1?
You're going 30 feet, if somebody wanted to build three 10-story floors, they could, that's a possibility in the R1 zone.
I think I'd limit the R1 to two stories, just for.
Is, what has it been historically? Is it?
30 feet.
30 feet.
30 feet.
30 feet and two stories, or is 30 feet, do whatever you want to do?
Tom's looking at the current code.
I mean, the condos are all in the R, you know, two or three zones, so I'm not too worried about, you know, that.
Yeah, 30 feet is what it's historically been.
I know, but is it two stories? Do we have a?
No, it doesn't say two stories.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Page 29.
So we've kept it what it is today, no limit on stories for single-family?
I think we should limit it to two stories.
To what end?
To what end, just so we keep it at two stories, or 30 feet?
It hasn't been at two stories, it's just been at 30 feet.
I know.
But what are we trying to accomplish by eliminating, because from an outside perspective, aside from, you know, windows, some aesthetic things, you know, if you're next to a 30-foot two-story house, or next to a 30-foot three-story house?
Bedroom count, parking, we only require two spaces.
Is that still true?
It's true.
We updated parking.
Not in the R1.
Another controlling factor is the lot coverage of 50% in the R1, so that's going to limit the size of the house somewhat.
Yeah, but they still go vertical, right?
If they can squeeze more within the 30-foot height limit.
I mean, it just seems we're going, you know, who would have thought we could get what we're getting in the R3, you know, get the creative, I mean, that's one thing, the R1's a little different, I mean, now you're right close to home, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking, just in general, I mean, preservation of neighborhoods, I mean, it's, be that one guy who wants to build the monstrosity in the neighborhood that doesn't fit.
I guess.
I'm not looking that way.
What we're looking for tonight is if there are any proposed change that the Commission would like to make in the administrative draft, it would be put into the draft that goes through the public hearing process, so that's.
I'd like to just, we just, if it's never been two story, we haven't had the problems, just make sure we don't have the problem, I suggest, limit it to two stories, I mean, it's.
I'm good with leaving it the way it is, I don't want to change it to, it's been okay with the height limit, and not the restriction on the, I would like to keep it the way it is.
Mr. Chairman, do you want a straw vote on? I think it's. Mr. Chairman, do you want a straw vote on, I think it, is that okay? Mr. City Attorney Mike Finkel to do that?
Yeah, I think if there is an issue here, we should get some consensus in terms of the direction they want to provide.
Yeah, I, I think I'm inclined to just have it be a height limitation and not be concerned about the number of stories.
I see both sides, and I agree with both sides, but if at thirty feet, if they put three stories in, it's still thirty feet. Even if it's two stories, it's still thirty feet.
I understand that.
So, it's not going to change the outside look so much.
I'm inclined to leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, that's it, that's good, all right.
Okay.
Um, one thing that I'm not seeing in your current code, and we haven't proposed in the updated code, is to establish some type of front yard coverage standard, which I frequently see in, in other zoning codes to address the issue that the gentleman just brought up this evening. A lot of cities want to limit hardscape in a front yard for a number of reasons. To allow groundwater to percolate, because people have a tendency to park in paved areas if it's all in a front yard. So, I don't know if you wanted to address that either in response to the comment that's come up tonight or just generally to place a limit on hardscape in a, in a front yard setback area.
We have landscaping, we have landscaping.
Fifty percent. Fifty percent. And then you have the strips on either side of the particles as well.
So, that, that's a, as opposed to a hardscape, I think it's a landscape.
It's the flip side. You have to have at least fifty percent front yard landscaping.
So, I think, so we're covered there?
Yeah.
That's it, right?
Okay.
Okay, something else I, that, and this, this is just something, I don't know why I thought of this, but it's, it's come up before. Where we have a conflict, where we have a business that comes in, and they're wanting to come in under, under, you know, one definition under the code, but perhaps, it seems like maybe they should be under a different definition. And for a specific kind of examples, we've had some fitness businesses come in and say that they're like instructional services, that they qualify under instructional services because under instructional services, because we have, you know, include classes or instruction in music, fitness, arts, sports, or academics, right? And then we have health and fitness activities, which are like gyms, right? But they also offer some classes and things like that. And I think I'd like to figure out a way to address that so that we don't have, because some of these places are, they're, they're gyms, but they just have classes where they do their gym stuff, right? So, how do we differentiate between that and, and where does that discretion lie? Does it lie with staff? Does it lie with the commission?
It lies first with the, with staff, with the director. Well, actually, it lies first in asking them a lot of questions as to what it is they're actually doing.
Yeah, and I don't want to just limit this just to that fitness thing, but anytime that we have, like, you know, somebody coming in saying, no, I think I should be under this classification, you know, how, how does that determination finally made?
It's made by the director, and the director, if the director's uncomfortable making a decision, can refer to the planning commission. So, if somebody comes in and the director says, no, I think you're actually Y, not X, based on how you've described the use to me. And if the person disagrees, they could bring that before the planning commission as well. So, there's, it starts with the director, but then both the director and the applicant have the ability to come forward and say, this is what I think I am, therefore, I think I should be in, allowed in a particular zone. So, it's a, we try to remove some of that discretion by having really solid definitions, but it starts by the person really working with staff to define what it is they're doing.
Right, and I think that's the challenge in that case where we had, you know, a fitness organization come in and make the case that they were instructional services, but all of their marketing material talked about getting in better shape and losing weight and getting a body always dreamed of and all that stuff, which to me was like, hey, this is a, this is a gym, this is a health and fitness facility. But because they did that via classes, like scheduled classes, they were trying to come in under this, under other classification.
You, you know what I would do then, and I'm glad you brought that, that particular one up, because if you, if you look in the definitions on page seven twenty-three, under instructional services, it does say fitness. And you could solve that, for example, by taking out the word fitness, so it's really focused on music, art, sports, or academics, because there's a definition for health slash fitness facilities, both small ones under twenty-five hundred square feet or large ones.
Right.
So-
Well, to make it trickier, I think the one that came in argued that they were also, it was a sport, it was boxing activity, right? So, but, but again, it was all about getting in better shape-
Right.
-and everything. So, I'm just saying that there are times where it can be tricky, and how do we, how do we make those determinations?
And I think, and you won't see that go away, but what you could do in instructional services is say this, in particular, this does not include a health or fitness facility or anything having to do with sports, so that those types of uses are defined to be a health facility, or health or fitness facility.
If I could add to this, I want to mention too that, first of all, the definition that with the draft that's before you with the definitions is much more comprehensive than what we currently have. So, there's that factor. We're going to more clearly define, as Laura mentioned, that there would be the opportunity for the director to review that and, and make a determination or to request that it go forward to the planning commission for that determination to be made. It's going to be much clearer, much more clear, I think, going forward than it has been in the past as to how that is to be handled.
Yeah.
I agree, as, as was mentioned, it really boils down to the questions that are asked up front. But it helps also when you've got much more clearer definitions to use. But we're always going to have something that comes up that doesn't fit a definition that we're going to have to use.
Right, or even some of the language, like even over, under health and fitness, it says aerobic classes. Oh, that's a class, you know, we're teaching you stuff. It's really a fitness activity, right? So, it's, you know, there's just, that creates these gray areas that become challenging to navigate.
Well, I think the notion of a class was it limits the number of people that are there. It's not so much that it's a class, it's, it's just that the activity's limited to a finite number rather than just coming and going.
For me, instructional services would mean that you're, you're, you're being educated, you're being taught something that you don't already, already know, right?
I, I would recommend that we-
Not just something that you are, you're attending as a, as a, just like everybody else, but you're doing-
If you have somebody leading it, I mean, I don't, I mean, we all know how to do a jumping jack, but I guess if you've got somebody setting the pace and the variety and the, of the different exercises that you're doing. Is it a class if it's limited to twenty people or is it, if it just goes, if it's just come and go?
I guess the argument to me would be, is it, is it more a class or is it more a fitness activity?
It's probably a hybrid.
To me, it's a fitness activity.
Little of both. Let him make the decision.
It should just say maybe health promotion.
You lost your gamble.
And using the term health promotion as-
What, what I would recommend is that we fix instructional services, so we take out fitness and sports. Because then it seems much more passive for music, art, academics.
It's, yeah, are you finding? Laura, that we would have to have added instructional services to the table. It looks like we don't have it currently.
Yep.
Page is table.
There it's, seven twenty-three, there's halfway down.
Well, that's not a table.
Seven twenty-three.
But in, what Jose's indicating is under service uses, we need to add instructional services back in.
Yeah, I'm not, so, I'm not sure if that's the right way to address it or not, because I think that there-
We can always address it later.
That there, there can be legitimate instructional things around sports.
Right, yeah.
Like, we have an archery place over here, and they're teaching people how to do archery, right? But that would be considered a sport.
Private lessons, I mean, you have lessons.
Yeah, so it's just-
And you might have three or four in the class.
It's just one of those difficult areas. So, I don't know that, that my question is so much about like, hey, let's change this and solve the problem now, because I don't know that that's going to be effective. But it's, it's also about like, when the problem does come up, how do we deal with it?
He deals with it, and if he can't, then it kicks up to us. And then we agonize and say, we got to fix it.
Can we let you deal with it?
Well, you can't, you can't fix it, right? Because sometimes, sometimes they're both true, and you just have to kind of go, okay, which one is more, is more true and...
And, and I think the key concern is, are they providing enough parking? And is it in an appropriate location? If, particularly if it's involving mostly kids, is it in a, in a safe location? Good question.
Those were just a couple of things I had off the top of my head, so if anyone else had anything.
I have a bunch, but that's okay. Oh, I mean, just comments, we're not at that point yet, are we?
Sure, yes.
Going through the table?
Mm-hmm, we are, we are going-
Well, did we want to go through everything in order, or do you have things?
I'm okay, I mean, I have, I got questions and stuff, you know, that, like multifamily, there's a question between multifamily, multiple family. Are we using, what are we using?
We, we had a last-minute switch, and so we may not have caught them all, but I think we're using multiple family, Jose.
Multiple family versus multifamily?
Right, because it, we're, we're trying to parallel the general plan language.
Okay, because I, it's not consistent all the way through. So, if you haven't done, if you're, you're going to make that consistent, right?
Right.
All right, okay, that, that was the one thing. On the daycare, on page two-dash-eight, you're deleting child daycare. The, the description of daycare in the, why? I guess that's my question, is why, why are we?
Because there's also adult daycare, and so we're just using the generic term daycare.
When you get into the apartment area, let me just raise a question, because I get my apartment magazines, and I'm reading stuff about, you know, prohibitions and stuff like this, what we can do and can't do. So, if somebody rents an apartment, wants to set up daycare, child daycare, we can't, we can't restrict that, okay, as a landlord. If somebody wants to do it, they can, they can set up a daycare. We can't require insurance either. What about adult? But if you cha-, but do I want adult daycare in an apartment in the R3? Not really. And I think that I could probably restrict that, probably, I'm not, without calling it. I guess the question is, I, why, why are, why are we taking out child daycare? And, and if somebody wants to come in and set up an adult daycare, then, um...
I-
I would think that would have to, now we're getting into group homes, we're getting into all of this stuff again. I mean, are we?
That's, um... I'm, I'm curious, I'd, I'd like to explore with you separately about the, the daycare and, and not being able to allow, because my understanding is under California law, there are really three types of daycare. There's small family daycare, which is six or fewer, which the city cannot regulate, in a single-family zone. There's large family daycare, which is up to twelve, that it, the number fluctuates a little bit depending on the age of the kids. The city also cannot restrict those in single-family zones. I do believe you can do it in multifamily zones.
You bet you got him as permitted, family daycare.
Hold on, and then there, and then there's commercial daycare. So, that would be a daycare facility that would have more than twelve children or adults, and that is a commercial use of property, considered to be more of a commercial use of property. So, it's not a family daycare. There's a difference between family daycare and commercial daycare.
Well, what's a family daycare home in, in the R3 zone, permitted by right? I've got, I've got ten units. I got somebody who wants to come in and turn in, he wants to rent an apartment and-
If they have a single-family home in the R3 zone, and maybe, and we probably need to clarify it in the table, because it's only if you're in a single-family home, not in a apartment.
It says that here. For R2 and R3.
It says.
Single-family dwelling, only permitted in single-family dwelling.
Only permitted in a single-family dwelling. All right.
And also for clarification too, under the definition, we have family daycare home as only being for children, but a daycare center is the one that would allow for adult older children. But the daycare homes are only for children.
Okay. The other, I just started ripping things out. Okay, so then, on page two-dash-fifteen, we're getting into, this has to do with office business professional halfway down, deleted fifteen, right now, we limit, uh... In the retail zones, fif-, we limit the non-retail uses or, you know, on the ground floor to no more than fifteen percent. We're changing that to thirty-three. We just turned down a, we just turned down a medical office for the same reason in our retail zone, our CG zone.
This would be for non-medical office?
Well, it's also farther back to, again, again, yeah, for non-med-, okay, for...
Uh, medical and dental offices are treated differently than business and professional offices, and they would not be, um...
Fall under the fifteen percent, is that what you're saying? I think that, I think we need to limit in our, in our retail, in our retail zones on the ground floor, we have a limitation of fifteen percent. And if we need to, my thinking was, has been for non, for a non-retail use without calling out medical or whatever, just a non-retail use.
The thinking behind that is, is that the, not to have retail spaces sit vacant to create a little bit more flexibility to allow the office. If it, in, if it were a medical or dental office, it would re, it would require a conditional use permit for, for ground floor frontage in the commercial general zone.
Well, okay, and then, and then we also have it on page two-dash-twenty-six. Same limitation.
That's correct. For, for non-medical office, it would be allowed up to thirty-three percent on the ground floor.
I think we should leave it at fifteen. I mean, this is our retail zone, and we've got the city struggling to meet, to meet, uh... At least what I'm reading in the paper, you know, we're going to go bankrupt, you have to increase revenue. If we're going to, you know, sales tax and all of that is part of the revenue stream. We allow non-retail uses in our retail zone. That's just the life, that's just the, as far as I'm concerned, if the office sits empty, it sits empty. If the space sits empty, it sits empty. That's the joys of owning retail property. If you're a property owner, you've got to lease it out retail. As a city, they're looking for sales tax. You know, the landlord doesn't care where, where he gets his rent dollar, it's all the same, whether it's from a retail use or a non-retail use, you know? So, from his perspective, there's no, you know, there's, a dollar's a dollar wherever I get it. From the city's perspective, if I'm putting my city hat on, I want to preserve my retail in my, in my sales tax space. My, I mean, you're not, you're not going to have sales tax if you lease all your retail space out to non-retail uses. That's my, that's my opinion. I mean, uh, we just turned down, we just turned down a medical office, because they're what, twenty-eight percent ground floor, something like that? You know, you exceeded the fifteen percent. And we said no at the last meeting. I mean, we approved this, they come, they come back, we turned them down yesterday, and we approved them today. I'm not, I'm not willing to give that up. I mean, I think that's, now, I, I, if I had my property owner hat on, landlord hat on, and I owned that building, I'd be in here saying, yeah, we, we need to make that fifty percent. You know, I, you know-
It's a, it's a policy call, so-
Yeah, I, I see.
We'll take direction.
I want to also clarify too that the way the code's currently written, as well as the way this is drafted right now, medical use is not under that fifteen percent caveat. It is by, it's not by right, it's, it's by conditional use permit on a case-by-case basis. If the commission wants to see that included in whatever that percentage limitation is, we'd need to put that footnote under the medical portion, because right now, that footnote's not there. So, what, if you want to make sure that under, because this is for, what we're talking about is for non-medical and dental office space and that current reading of three-three percent.
Well, just take out the non-medical. I think it's anything other than a retail use shall, shall be limited to no, no more than fifteen percent.
Challenge is, under the medical use section, it says there's no right allowance, by right allowance, it's only by conditional use permit. So, my point is, under the medical portion of this, you'd want to, if you want to- So, my point is, under the medical portion of this, you'd want to, if you want to conclude that in that maximum of fifteen percent, we'd need to somehow note that. So, you'd have a conditional use permit requirement.
You're trying to, you're trying to go through and pull out every, every single use. I'm just saying, you have a blanket statement, if it's a non-retail use, it's prohibited, or it's limited to fifteen. It doesn't matter what it is, it can be medical, it can be-
I think we're saying the same thing.
I know, I know, but if we're going to try to footnote every use, then we have, if we miss one use, because it's not footnoted, then somebody's going to, well, this is an office use, but it's not, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, if in that zone, that ground floor, non-retail uses on the ground floor, you know, shall not exceed fifteen percent of the floor area. I mean, it doesn't matter what use it is, if it's a non-retail use, it doesn't go in there. That can be a fitness on there, it can be a medical use, it can be a nail salon. Well, nail salon might be, if we get retail, if we get sales. And maybe define that, I mean, what is, what are we looking for? Maybe it should be a non, well, a retail use, whatever the definition of a retail use is that we have.
And again, my, I think we're saying the same-
However, we get to the same spot, just so we-
I think it would be beneficial, as the one that is responsible to work with applicants that come in, having that footnote under the office, medical and dental office section, that says it is subject to a maximum of fifteen percent.
That's fine.
Helps us to be able to say that, because right now, the argument can be made, well, it's by conditional use permit, so- It's up to the commission.
And the reason, and the reason that's separate by CUP is because of the intensity of the use and stations and all kinds of stuff. So, I mean, we could maintain the CUP for those uses, but it would be under a limitation in the retail.
CUP under no reason, under no circumstance would even be able to consider a CUP if the fifteen percent were triggered.
Sure, because if we weren't going to consider another office use, why would we consider a medical use in that same space?
And that's the circumstance.
Right, just so we, just so we preserve that, that's my-
So, are we going to return it to fifteen?
That's the question we have for the commission, whether or not the proposal is to limit it to fifteen percent or another number.
Fifteen?
I think about the fifteen.
Yeah, Ralder.
So, and we've just got four minutes left on this, or we have to start the writing.
I know, just, let me just skip that one.
And Mr. Chairman, recognizing that we won't get through it all tonight, unless it has made the suggestion-
Well, we could go over just a little, oh, we've got people here, don't we?
Yeah, a couple of suggestions that we can continue to another workshop study session, and give you some more time to look at it, and if you've got comments that you want to give us ahead of time, we can come prepared with responses.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that, as long as it doesn't, you know, delay things.
I've got two more.
But I think it would be good.
It'll make the hearing process go really fast, if we get it all taken care of through the study sessions. Then, when it comes before you for hearing, we've talked, we will have talked about a lot of things already.
Right.
So, we'll work on scheduling, and what we'd like to do is recommend a separate date. We talked about this last meeting, about the possibility of a separate special meeting date that is dedicated to this. We've been looking at our schedule, I believe, the twelfth or the fourteenth, which is either a Tuesday or a Thursday. Unfortunately, we can't do Wednesday because of other meetings scheduled in this room. But we'd like to do one of those two dates. We could either do a six o'clock, six o'clock is what we prefer, if we can make that work, and be able to come in, focus on this, and hopefully, within, you know, a short turnaround time, be able to field all of your comments, questions, and be hopefully in a comfortable position to be able to finalize that draft and have it for you in a public hearing after that.
All right, sure.
So, if, I don't know if there's a, you know, we're catching you cold with those dates. We are, I think our initial preference was for the fourteenth, with the twelfth as a backup on that.
Of what, March?
Yes.
I'm good.
What day's the week of those?
The Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Wait a minute.
And as was mentioned too, we'd love to hear from you, please don't wait till then. We'd love to field your, to receive your comments and have a chance to, you know, to digest that, if you will, or discuss it internally, and be able to be prepared to respond to that when we meet next.
I have a, I have a standing Tuesday meeting every Tuesday from five to five-thirty, so I might be able to make that work. I would just need to know.
You said Thursday, though, right?
Tuesday.
Yeah.
That's the twelfth.
Thursday to the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Fourteenth, work is your main.
That's what they're after.
Okay, yeah, I can, I think I can do that.
We'll follow up with you tomorrow morning to confirm that with all of you. But at this point in time, we're going to go ahead and focus on the fourteenth at six o'clock as a special meeting, and go from there. So, thank you very much for your input.
As a reminder, also look at your emails too, because we might send something to you that we need you to look at. So, look at your city email address if you can.
Tom, are we anticipating that we could probably get the landscaping, parking chapter and signs to them for that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I know Tom's done his work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, I guess with that, we'll adjourn the subdivision committee meeting. And move on.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take me to get five minutes?
I'm good.
Yes, no?
Yes.
He's like a poison break.